All right, Councilor Hall.
Here.
Councilor DePurio. I have Councilor Allen. I have Councilor Mangan. I have Councilor McKinnon.
Here.
I have Councilor Napolitano.
Here.
Councilor Sani.
Here.
I have Councilor Semenelli.
Present.
And Councilor Capone.
Here.
We have nine members present who have a quorum.
Nine members present, we have a quorum. Please rise and salute the flag. Before the clerk reads the item on the agenda this evening, Councilor Sal Sichetta is unable to attend the meeting tonight because of illness, so wishes go out to Sal. Clerk, read the item.
All right, we have a resolution up by Councilor Mike Mangan that the mayor in the city solicitor appears it's meaning to discuss the power plant situation in South Emory.
Councilor Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we could, I know we discussed this several months ago, I don't know if it was May or June, whatever I brought it up, but there was some discussion about maybe some ongoing litigation and possible resolution to this agreement thing that was in place because we know it doesn't expire until 2020. So I invited the solicitor and the mayor and everything so we could go in. I know we can't, at the time I was told, we couldn't discuss it in public because if it's ongoing, we'd have to go into executive session at that point. So I'd like to ask my fellow councils, like I said, to vote to support, to put it into executive session so we can go and discuss and get an update on what's going on in terms of this particular situation.
Okay, so if I ever correct, you're looking to this particular piece here. You want to go into executive session this evening?
Yeah.
Okay. From the chair, if I may, I would ask that perhaps we have representative from the Department of the City and city solicitor and identify, in fact, that we do need to go into executive session before we do so, but I will leave that up to the body.
So I'm moved.
So if we could please have city solicitor before us and perhaps individual who is going to be speaking on the actual piece itself that could tell us that there will be sensitive information, that we may need to go into executive session, that'd be great. Colleen, if you please introduce yourself to the record, please.
Good evening, Colleen Mejia. I'm the city solicitor. There is, I believe, pending litigation or if not imminent litigation, and things that would be discussed would be sensitive to that litigation, so I do advise that you go into executive session. And when you do make the motion to go into executive session, you should state exactly the parties outside the city council who would be joining the city council in executive session.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for our solicitor while she's here? All right, thank you, Colleen. Councilor McKinnon.
Mr. President, while we're in executive session, I would request that there be someone to take minutes of that as well, and maybe if we could record it as well. Thank you.
Yeah, we do have to take minutes. And before we vote on going into executive session, having looked at the statute, but my recollection is we need to state the purpose, city solicitor stated the purpose, which there is some delicate information to be discussed. We do have pending litigation or imminent litigation, so that's the reason why. We need to identify who outside of the council members is going to be present. Who, I believe this is your piece, Councilor, who are we going to invite along?
The mayor, the city solicitor, and then anybody else, Mayor Di Maria, you know, Phil's, you know, just part in to this.
Okay, I think we have to put that on the record, so from the chair, what I'd do, I'd ask if we could have someone from the administration come forward and just identify who it is exactly is going to be in the executive session. Thank you, Melissa. If you could please state your name for the record, I appreciate it.
Good afternoon, Melissa Rodriguez, Mayor Di Maria's Chief of Staff. We respectfully request Attorney Lyman, Attorney Welt, Mayor Di Maria, Pam Davis, Bill Hart, Carl Sarabian, Colleen Mejia, and I think there's someone else on the board too, and Kathy from the board. Thank you.
That's a long list.
It's a long list.
Hold on, don't go anywhere because I don't think I've got anyone.
It's okay.
We have Attorney Welt, Attorney.
Lyman, L-Y-M-A-N, yep.
Pam Davis.
Yep, Bill Hart.
Bill Hart.
Mayor Di Maria.
Mayor Di Maria.
Mm-hmm, Carl Sarabian.
Carl Sarabian.
Mm-hmm.
Colleen Mejia.
Yep, and I don't know Kathy's last name, I apologize.
Kathy Bernier.
Kathy Bernier.
Kathy Bernier.
She's on the board.
Mr. Clerk, do you have all of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, and myself, I'm sorry.
And Melissa Rodriguez. Okay, thank you very much, Melissa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'll try and hear the question.
Councilor Allen.
Mr. Chair, we need one other motion. That motion is that the minutes of this meeting shall be sealed until such time as the contents of this meeting are made public by, I would guess, the mayor's office.
Okay, and is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to go into executive session with the individuals listed by the Chief of Staff, and we're looking to have the minutes sealed until such time as they be made public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, on actual going into executive session, we need to take a roll call vote, so clerk will call a roll.
Councilor Hall.
Yes.
I have Councilor DePurio.
Yes.
I have Councilor Allen.
Yes.
I have Councilor Mangan.
Yes.
I have Councilor Napolitano.
Yes.
I have Councilor McKinnon.
Yes.
I have Councilor Sani.
Yes.
I have Councilor Semenelli.
Yes.
And I have Councilor Capone.
Yes.
We have nine members in the.
Nine votes in affirmative. You have voted to go into executive session. Councilor Allen.
As a result of that meeting, have you been asked to order after that meeting?
Yes, we, thank you, Councilor. We do have to state on the record that we are going to come back into open session after that meeting.
So I'll make that a comment.
Move in second?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay, good. So what we'll do is we'll take, I guess, three seconds?
Just.
Okay. All right, I guess we're in executive session. All the individuals who are going to be present will be in the back room. Thank you.
Okay, this committee of the whole has recessed. We are here. The chair will entertain a motion to refer this matter to our next council meeting with the recommendation that the minutes remain sealed pending litigation.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved and second to refer this item to our next meeting with the record to be sealed pending the ongoing litigation. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have so moved.
They're moving second adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Why don't we take a roll call in the adjournment? The clerk advised me that given the significance of the issue, perhaps we should be voting on that motion by voice vote as opposed, I mean, roll call as opposed to voice vote. So what you're voting for is to refer this to our next meeting with the recommendation that the minutes remain sealed because of the pending litigation. Clerk will call a roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Marquise.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor DePaulitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simmely.
Yes.
Counselor Simmely.
Yes.
And Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Ten votes in the affirmative. You have so referred. Chair will entertain the motion to adjourn. Moved and second adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have so adjourned. I see that we have many smiling faces in our audience. Welcome to City Hall. If we could please have Counselor McKinnon forward for purposes of presentation of citations.
I want to welcome you all here tonight. It's an honor and a pleasure to have you before us and have you come up and receive a citation on behalf of the city. So this is winning Division III GU-14 Middlesex League. Did I say it right or was that wrong? Oh, all right. And winning in the playoffs, three to one games. So this would be for Coach Bruno Roblowski. Could you come up, please?
Okay. Isabel Alvarez. Alexis Brown. Aileen Dutra. Connie Flores. Dayeli Garcia. Maha Hanadi. Allison Harvey. Victoria McGonigal.
Rokel Mahia. Samantha Perkins. Gindy Plancy. Lentes. Cheryl Lynn Rodriguez. Giselle Sanchez. Hannah Stewart. Dashana Sindri. Ashley Tejada. Melissa Tejada. And last but not least Kendra Roblowski. Coach.
And this is in recognition of outstanding accomplishments and contributions, winning Division III GU-14 Middlesex League, going three and one to win in the playoffs for Everett Soccer Club 2015, given this 24th day of August in 2015 by Councilor John Leo McKinnon and the entire city council and the mayor.
If the members, congratulations. If the members wanted to come up for a photo, if there are any parents who would like to come up and take a photo of the group, feel free to do so.
How you doing, Ann? Congratulations.
Did you get a picture?
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Actually, what we were gonna do is have the other team up first. We'll have the other team up first and then, then we'll do that. The other team, could we have Coach Malon Kajada? Mikey, you want to lead off there? Or do you want to hand him out?
That's the head coach?
That's Marion?
Yeah. Marcos Rodriguez, coach.
Thank you.
And Edma.
Janine.
Janine? Okay. This is for winning the Division II Middlesex BU-10, going four and oh in the playoffs to win. Ayela Jourdeen. Coria Juan Pablo. De Silva Gabriel. Joshua De Souza. Takura Douch. I'm sorry, I didn't get that. And Aljandro Garcia. David Janem. Gabriel Lima. Gilherme Morales. Gilherme Silva. Rafael Silva. David Souza. I'll give it to you. You can have it. All right. This is in recognition of outstanding accomplishment and contributions, winning Division II BU-10 Middlesex League, going four and oh to win in playoffs for Everett Soccer Club 2015. This is given by me, Councilman John Leo McKinnon, and the entire city council. That was for recognition of the 2B-10 Middlesex team. Great job, boys. Come on up here and take a picture.
Councillors, if you want to join us for a photo, again, parents, family members in the audience, if you'd like to take a photo, by all means, please. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to join us for a photo, please, please come forward.
We'll take this picture, then we'll take the both of them together?
Yes.
Want two of them together? All right.
What's the name, son? Thank you.
Do you do two things? Yep, I thought, I told you yesterday, this is an awful one.
Oh, Jones?
Yeah.
With, which one, the drum?
No, the other one.
Oh, Counting Hoarder.
Yeah.
That was dyed. My God.
Congratulations.
John, is she gonna give us the one for the papers, this young lady here? Maybe let her get in the center? Is that the one, is that the best camera?
No, that's an old-fashioned 35mm camera.
Michael, you asked? I know Joe has one.
It's mine, yeah. These will be posted to about four different accounts on Facebook.
Just tag everybody.
One more, now just the girls and the mayor, just the girls. Not the whole, the whole council and the girls by themselves, like the boys did.
Yeah, the girls didn't get that shot.
Yes.
Boys, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys. All right, guys, get serious. Let me see your flags. We focus? All right. Smile. Everybody say, look at the camera. Now I have one personal request afterwards, Mr. Mayor, is my daughter and my niece. I have one from, from eight years ago, from the first citation I got, the first damage.
My aunt, far south.
What was her name?
Rita Zervas.
Oh, Rita.
Yeah.
Yeah, ring the bell for me like I'm the one who's late. I was watching you. I was watching.
What's up? What's going on?
Meeting of the City Council will come to order, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Delasola. Counselor De Florio. Counselor Hanlon. Counselor Mangan. Counselor Macaze. Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor Palatano.
Here.
Counselor Schedeta. Counselor Sani.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Present.
Counselor Capone.
Here.
Ten members present, Mr. President.
Ten members present, you have a quorum. We have already saluted the flag, but I do ask that we, before I read further, Counselor Schedeta is gonna be unable to make this meeting, he's under the weather, so our best wishes go out to him. I would ask that we stand for a moment of silence for John Moore, who is a former councilman from Ward Four, who is also a member of the Everett Auxiliary Police. Thank you, councilors. Clerk will read the first item of business.
Item number one is public participation.
She will accept the motion to open pub...
Second.
Move in second to open public participation, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have so moved. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to say anything?
Make a motion to close.
Is there anybody who wants to speak? I just wanna be clear, we've got two names here, I believe that they're four pieces on the agenda as opposed to public participation, is that correct? So if, if there's no one who would like to speak on the public participation, Counselor Sani had a motion to close public, it's been moved in second to close public participation, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, you have closed public participation. Clerk will read the first item of business.
Item number one, Mr. President, is a communication from Chief of Police Stephen Maisy. I am writing to inform you that our department will be seeking a justice assistance grant the amount of $15,575. We intend on applying the grant monies for the purchase of new mountain bicycles and overtime expenses for mountain bike patrols on weekends. If you have any questions or require additional information, do not hesitate to call.
Accept the communication, place on file.
Moved in second to accept the communication, place on file, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, you have so moved. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number two.
Motion to suspend rules.
Counselor McKinnon.
Take item number thirty. Do the, do to the sign-in sheet.
It's been moved in second to suspend the rules and take item thirty, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have so moved, clerk will read item number thirty.
Item number thirty, resolution sponsored by Counselor John Leo McKinnon, Counselor Fred Capone, the City Council, we hereby resolve that the month of September 2015 shall be Recovery Month in Everett and call upon the people of Everett to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support this year's Recovery Month.
Counselor McKinnon. Um, I have two people that had signed in that would like to speak on this piece, uh, one is Jean Granick and Elaine Silva. What, what particular provision? It's a resolution, resolutions can, it would be if it's the final, I think you're thinking about the final voting on ordinance or something of that nature. So, resolution, routine matters can be, can be acted upon. Mr. President, I would ask that, since they are in the audience, they come before us and... And what were the names of the individuals, council, I'm sorry? Uh, Jean Granick and Elaine Silva. Ladies, if we could please have you before us, we appreciate that. Uh, in front of you are microphones, the one to your left has the button that gets pressed and turns green, that way you know that's on. The one on your right has a little lever to put that on, and if you would, please ask that you introduce yourselves for the record. Just push that button. There you go.
Once it's green, then...
There you go.
I can go. Hi, I'm Elaine Silver, I'm the interim director for the Everett Health Department and the nursing supervisor. I thank you very much for bringing this to the attention of the residents here in the city of Everett. September, as you know, is Recovery Month, okay? Every year, there are many multiple events held here in the city through the Everett Health Department, with the cooperation and the partnership that we have through the Everett Community Health Partnership and the Substance Coalition with Cambridge Health Alliance, through the police, fire, and our Everett schools. This year, um, a lot of, there's been a lot of press and a lot of final awareness of drug addiction and heroin addiction in the cities. The past eight, nine years, we have all been working on it through the Health Alliance and the Everett City, and have been very supportive. The past two years, here in the Health Department, we have focused on disposals and the proper disposals of needles. As you may know, you've probably read about the city of Boston finding a lot of needles. We wrote two grants with Cambridge Health Alliance, in which one, we spent four months educating residents here in the city of Everett and also students in the Everett school systems. We taught them what was the proper way to dispose of a needle, we developed a program, we gave out shops, containers. We also encouraged, there are two kiosks in the city presently, one at the Everett Police Department and one here at the Health Department, for people to dispose of properly any unused medications. A lot of data on drug addiction is from children or even anyone going into a household and opening up that medicine cabinet and finding everyone's medicine in there. Everybody knows they went to the dentist, probably six, seven years ago, and he gave you a pill for the pain, and what did you do? You put it back in the medicine cabinet, you never got rid of it. Well, unfortunately, you never know, you could go on Monday, and someone who comes into your home can go in there Tuesday and take something, and you could start a problem. So we have encouraged this, in the past four months, four to six months, we've noticed an increase of people bringing us unused medications. Some are people just being more aware and going through the medicine cabinets, and some are who have family members who have been ill at home, or who have been in a nursing home, and have passed away and don't know what to do with it. This past year, with Cambridge Health Alliance, we wrote a grant to purchase two needle kiosk. One will be placed in the Everett Police Department and one here at the Everett Health Department. They will be available 24/7 at the Police Department and at all city hall hours here. Residents will be able to take any needles that they find, or that they have at home that they use for medication prescription, and they will be able to put them in a container. As of July 1st, 2012, it is illegal to dispose of these types of syringes in household trash. So what has happened, unfortunately, is the medical field and pharmacies never really quite prepared for this. You can do mail order, in which you may purchase a, what we call a little shops container. You put your needles that are used in there, and you put them in the mail, and you mail them back. Some doctors' offices will take them back, and some of your local pharmacies will. The problem being is, the cost of disposal has skyrocketed. We probably, about five years ago, maybe paid fifty to seventy dollars a month, we can pay up to two hundred dollars a month now for them to come in to properly dispose of these used syringes. We started a program, and I have some brochures that you can all have and some things here, we purchased the two kiosks, they just arrived, we're in the process of putting the proper identification on them, and have the one delivered to the Police Department and the one here. We have, um, some nice little shops containers, and we've already had some residents who participated a year ago in our shops collection program. And they now take a shops container from us, they take it home, and they fill it, and they bring it back to us to properly dispose of. These kiosks are completely locked and safed, the keys are in a private possession, no one can have access to them. The only one, really, we will empty them through the Health Department. So a person can go in and, I don't know if you're aware, shops containers can be like this, this, and this. The biggest one we have, this kiosk, it looks like a mailbox. And you open up the top, they will put their kiosk in, they close it, and it falls down into a secluded bin. It's all double locked, and we will be emptying them ourselves from the Health Department and disposing of them. It's in hopes that this is part of our partnership, this is just one little tiny little thing that we've done. The Everett School Department has been with us and helped us a lot, um, we're hoping to get out more and more awareness of this, and hopefully our kiosk will, should be out within, within a couple of weeks, we just, um, received them, so we're waiting for them. And now I'll turn it over to Jean Granick, who's one of our biggest partners here, and runs the Substance Abuse Coalition.
Actually, before we turn that over, Mr. President, could we get a phone number for Ms. Silva, so she could air it that...
Yeah, we do, you can call.
Actually, if, if, what, I'm gonna ask a question, so, um, if you wanted to just do that, and then, what, we would ask that, if, if anyone needs any type of information from your department, uh, they could readily be available from that number, correct?
Yes, they can. They can call our main number at the Health Department, is six one, six one seven, three nine four, two two five five is our main desk. My phone number, that I usually handle most of the calls and concerns, is six one seven, three nine four, two two five eight.
And that would be Mrs. Silva?
That would be mine.
Thank you. And if you could just state your name and title.
My name's Jean Granick, this is on...
I believe, just push it up, press it up.
I think it's on.
My name's Jean Granick, and I work for the Cambridge Health Alliance, and I've been the program director for the Everett Community Health Partnership Substance Abuse Coalition for several years. And we've been working very closely with, um, all the sectors in the city of Everett to address substance abuse. We've had funding from SAMPA, the, at a federal level, and we've had local, we've had DPH funding from Massachusetts. So currently, we, um, are ending our federal funding, and we now have just Massachusetts DPH funding, which is specifically designed to address the opioid and prescription drug issue, as well as to address alcohol and underage drinking. We have, as I said, representation from all sectors in the community, government, schools, law enforcement, youth, parents. We have a very, um, robust parent, um, coalition, they're called Parents' Action Committee of Everett, they're specifically focused on, um, helping parents begin conversations with their middle school age students about alcohol. Um, there's a, there's a campaign, and we've rolled it out in the schools, and there'll be further rolling out in the community and partnering, partnering with businesses and other local providers to get the information out and the tools. There's a website, there's workbooks, there's lots of materials, we have many different kinds of materials, and we try and distribute, and we go to community events. Um, it's, we can't reach everyone, but we're trying, and we rely on other people to spread the word. Um, and so, the city, uh, the mayor's office actually has been very helpful posting our, you know, reposting our posts, um, on Facebook, so it really gets the word out. Uh, we work very closely with the Health, um, with the Health Department, obviously, and, uh, we work very closely with the Police Department, we have, um, funding for compliance checks, um, to, um, to make sure that, um, your liquor stores are not selling liquor to minors, and that they're properly IDing. So this is funding that we've received from the federal level, um, that is being, um, brought into Everett to address underage drinking. Um, we work with four kids only, the mental health providers in the community, they do trainings, um, at the School Department, with the Police Department, with Fire Department, with other people. Uh, recently, I had a conversation with, um, Mr. Anthony O'Brien, I'm sorry, I don't know his type, Captain O'Brien. And, um, we're working on putting together a resource packet that first responders can give to families. We have a lot of educational materials, as I said, this is, um, how you can get Narcan, why you might wanna get Narcan. We're trying to promote the Good Samaritan Law, why people should call 911, why they shouldn't be afraid, in terms of an overdose, whether they would get arrested. Um, it's really hard to get the word out to everybody, I just can't repeat that enough, and, um, people in a, in a crisis sometimes don't always do what you want them to do. So, uh, we're just trying to educate people as much as we can. We have a very robust youth, um, group, it's called TEESA, Teens in Everett Against Substance Abuse, I think some of you are familiar with the group. And they work, um, on educating students, other, their peers, as well as, um, trying to work on some policy issues to, um, make substance abuse less accessible to youth. Uh, we also have a group of Everett youth networkers, they're all service providers who, in Everett, who service youth, they work, they meet quarterly, they work together to see how they can continue to collaborate and provide services and resources. Um, and then I think the most, the newest initiative is what's called, maybe people are familiar with, called MOPSI, which is funding from Massachusetts Department of Public Health, the BSAS, um, specifically to address opioid and prescription drug abuse. So Everett is part of a, um, MOPSI cluster with Cambridge, Somerville, Everett, and Watertown. And we are, um, working again as a region and locally to get the word out that people can access Narcan, that they need to take care, they need to monitor their prescriptions at home, they need to have safe storage, they need to have conversations. We are a prevention coalition, we're not a treatment coalition, we advocate as much as we can for treatment.
Mm-huh.
Um, we're interested in the, you know, making sure that providers use the prescription monitoring program, we're trying to connect with pharmacies, and we're just trying to, you know, collaborate with as many people as we can.
It, I think one thing you have to...
Actually, I know that there's a woman behind you, her name is Patty Scalise, and they are from Everett Overcoming Addiction. Um, are you all working in...
Yes, we're all working together.
Okay.
We're, we're doing...
I think you have to remember is that with an addict, somebody who has an addiction, they have to want to get help, they have to want to go through the program. I know that in my position, I've referred many a person, we're very fortunate here in Everett, it's only one phone call to someone, it's a website we can go on, you know, we call and say, there's somebody here, they need this. They have to know not only where a program is and where they can go for help, they have to know about their insurances, is there a bed available, what kind of support is available for them and for their family, and what the follow-through is. We, we, you lead them down the path, and we have done quite a few leading, and there are some very good success stories.
I'd also like to add that, um, the state is working to develop, um, a core of recovery coaches, and we are trying, so people need to be trained to become recovery coaches, and, and the coalition is very interested in making recovery coaches more accessible, um, within the community. And it's, it's a work in progress, um, but it's, not anybody can just become a recovery coach.
Now, um, Jean, could you just give your number and, uh, an access number that they can reach out to you?
Sure, sure, my, um, office phone number is six one seven, five nine one, six nine two seven. And I actually just wanna introduce Jamie Letterer, who is the coordinator and the youth specialist. And she and I work very closely together with the city and all of our community partners.
Now, uh, there's September, Mr. President, if I get out of that too.
Absolutely.
Um, there's, uh, September is Awareness Month.
So September is National Recovery Month, and we send people from the coalition down to the State House for the, and we've done this every year for like the last eight or nine years. We go to the State House, um, Recovery Day is, in Massachusetts, is organized by the Massachusetts Organization for Addiction and Recovery, and their acronym is MOR. And they attend our coalition meetings, but we are doing an event, so we will go to the State House and have a representation from Everett.
Mm-huh.
And we will also be holding an event, um, on September 25th at the Parrish Street...
Parrish Street.
You want me to read it?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, I have it, it says, you are invited, art opening and gallery reception, Parrish Street Gallery, and participation with Everett Overcoming Addiction and Everett Community Health Partnerships.
and participation with Everett Overcoming Addiction and Everett Community Health Partnership's Substance Abuse Coalition. September is National Recovery Month. Celebrate with us, recognize and honor family and friends in rec, in recovery with art, spoken words, refreshments, and food. Art opening and gallery reception, Wednesday, Friday, September 25th, from 6:30 to 10:30 PM. We're Parrish Street Gallery, 101 Parrish Street, Everett, Mass. For more information, please call, and there's two numbers, nine seven eight seven two six eight nine seven two, or six one seven five nine one six nine two seven." I mean, I feel that more of this should be done within this city. I feel that more awareness, and when you take the stigma away from, you know, the families or individuals that are having an issue or a problem with this, it's easier to go and seek recovery at that point. I mean, I've talked to you plenty of times before about this, and you're no stranger to me, so I think this whole group right here does wonderful things, and if we can actually get the resources out and information about the resources, there may be more type of recovery coming back, and there may be more saving of life, actually. So, I know that Narcan is now carried on our, it was just stated that it's in the police and also fire now, so maybe that will show a positive situation to anybody that's actually having trouble out there. I know that different things like this, right here, just getting together and talking about these different things, may open the eyes of some parents that are out there that are saying, not mine, but, and then they're, you know, afraid to say it, or it relieves them a little bit, just so they know that there's other people out there dealing with this stuff as well. So, I'm all for it. I know that you guys do wonderful work.
We'd like, there's also a call for artists, and you don't have to be a great artist, but the theme is recovery, so if you, any art depicting recovery as you, as it relates to you or your family, everybody's, nobody's art will be turned away.
Sure. This, this seems like a great event, and it seems like people that should get involved if, you know, regardless of what, what their situation is. I mean, you need to get involved, because you never know.
There also...
Just to touch on some point.
There also is a meeting here, Mayor De Maria, we've had this in the works for, I don't know, two or three months now, on September 14th, which all of, we will all come together again to discuss what has been going on and where we can go forward, and I'm sure the mayor would love to have any of you there.
Sure. I will be attending this, so, I know, there'll be probably a few.
We're looking for food donations.
Sure. Well, just give me a call, you got my number. I want to thank you for appearing tonight. Ms. Scalise, did you want to say anything? Okay.
Here's some...
We'll have you, if you ladies don't mind, we'll have you, we'll have you stay right there, because we do have at least one council that has a question.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the latitude.
Council, Megan.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank you for the work that you do, as Council McKenna said. Also, Patty, for the work you do also, I was very fortunate, along with some of my colleagues who, that we attended the, the thing in the, back in the springtime down at Sacramone Park, did a great job down there, and hopefully it's an annual event. I just read recently, I believe in the local paper as well, I believe it was in the Boston Globe, that, which I'm glad to say that they're going to be doing, the Cambridge Health Alliance is now, in terms of the prescriptions, everything is going to be done, no more paper prescriptions anymore, I believe I read that, and it's going to be, well, either over the phone or through the internet, so you can't hand somebody, and somebody can go over and give it to somebody else or whatever, and so forth. So that, that's something that is reality, if you could just touch on that.
I also read the article, and I received a copy of that, so it's my understanding, yes, that electronic prescriptions will now be ordered.
So it would be for the hospital in Somerville, the hospital in Cambridge, and the wooden up the street here?
Right, and any of the primary care sites, the care centers that the, that the Health Alliance is licensed to run, and the emergency room.
Okay, great, that's great to hear that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions? Council, Seminelli.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you today. So, just for the public to know, what, what would you, how would you get rid of a needle that you found out on the street? What should you do?
You very much should, first of all, be very, very careful. Majority of needles that we have been finding on the streets and gotten calls for, a lot are actually from people who have an illness, you know, such as diabetes, and they lose them. If you do find it, if there's a cap on it, and you think that you could safely pick it up and put it into a container, you could bring it to either the police station or to the health department if we're opened, either one. If you see a bunch of them, then you can report it, and it would be picked up. Usually, the police or the health department goes out to pick them up.
So you should, you could take it, pick it up, you don't need any gloves or nothing to...
No, as long as you were careful, it's the needle stick, it's the stick of the, the needle itself that could do the harm. And majority of the time, when you do find them on the street, they're capped. I guess drug addicts take the time to recap them, they're going to reuse them.
You should, you should probably put them in a water tank, down, throw them in the trash, you know, jeopardize them, collect them.
It should be put into a secure container. And where we do have two kiosks coming, you'll have two facilities to bring it into, and I mean, the police station is open 24/7, so that's where it should be disposed of. But put it safely, make sure you can pick it up safely, do not, if you think, instruct young children not to touch them and to report them to someone.
And one more thing, just, I mean, you talked about, what, what would happen if they get stung by a needle? What should you do? Call 911, go directly to the...
You should, if you can, is to take that needle that you did get stung by, stuck by, put it in a safe container, and to call, and to call your primary care, and then more than likely, they will prescribe you to go to the local emergency room to just have blood work done.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Seeing none, well, excuse the customary thanks. Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you haven't already done so, you may want to get this information, ECTV, I'm sure that they'd be more than happy to...
They do have that.
Wonderful. Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council?
Refer back to sponsor.
You, you actually want favorable action on this...
Oh, favorable action, sorry.
I'm sorry. So for Recovery Month, we're actually having two events. One will be the viewing of the film, The Anonymous People, which is highly recommended, and we're going to have it at the high school, and we're just securing that date, and it'll be open to the public, and we'll have resource from local organizations and regional organizations that specifically are here to help people with substance abuse issues and support families, and then, of course, the art show.
Thank you. Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you for your time.
Pieces before the council?
Favorable action.
Is there second?
Second.
So moved, second favorable action? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have so moved. Clerk will revert back to the regular order of business, item number two.
We suspend the rules and take item 24, which Chief Maisy is here in the audience.
It's been moved, the second, suspend the rules and take item number 24. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have so moved. Clerk will read item number 24.
Item number 24, resolution sponsored by Council Rosa de Florio and Cynthia Sani to invite the chief of police for August 24th meeting to explain the incident that happened on School Street regarding the shooting.
Can I help invite Chief Maisy up, please?
Chief Maisy, could you please come before us? Thank you for being here tonight, chief.
Mr. Chairman, and...
If you could just identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Stephen Maisy, chief... Good evening, my name is Stephen Maisy, police chief with the city of Everett.
Council de Florio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Maisy, I understand that this is still under investigation, so it's far as I believe, as far as I know.
Correct.
Okay. So I'm really not here to ask any questions about this, because we don't want to disturb the investigation. But what I would like to know is, when any facility, whether it's this one, or anybody else, calls for detail cop, if you don't have a detail cop to go there, are they able to go outside to a private?
So, how normally works, we have packs with other cities, and if, any kind of work, not just these type of facilities, licensed, liquor license establishments, when any kind of work that requires an officer or an officer's needed, if we can't fill it, we put it out to other cities that we have partnerships with, and, and they can try to fill it. Some work, the work that usually goes unfilled is, is a lot of times, weekend, weekend-type work goes unfilled. I don't know if there was, I don't believe there was a detail scheduled to be there that, that evening.
Well, that's, I'm leading to, I know all the councils are saying, this isn't part of what I have on the agenda, but I'm leading to the incident and trying not to get into the details of the incident. But when this, when this incident happened, there was no detail cop there at the time, is that correct?
There was no detail officer hired by the facility. I can tell you that Everett officers were in the neighborhood in close, very close proximity, like they always are when the licensed establishments close. Officers were on scene when this incident happened.
So the officers were there?
Officers were there.
Okay.
And, and backup units were there within seconds, under a minute. The area was covered heavily.
The other thing is, when, do you have any idea of when this investigation, is it close to coming to a head?
What I could tell you, you know, keep in mind, so there's a very active, aggressive investigation. I can't get into specifics as to what the investigators are doing, but I can tell you that detectives from, from the Everett Police Department, working with state police detectives assigned to the Middlesex District Attorney's Office, are working diligently, they've been working around the clock since this incident happened on the 12th. And, you know, part of the challenge is, there were a lot of people at that facility who were not from Everett, who would not have been at the city if it wasn't for the type of event that was promoted at that, that facility that night. And that poses obviously challenges to us, and there were no officers assigned to work inside the facility that night. So it's, it's a challenging case, and, you know, I wish I could, you know, could have prevented it from happening, but we're working diligently, and I'm hoping, I'm optimistic that at some point, we'll identify the suspects that are involved, but I can't really go into much detail beyond that.
And the other question I have is, what's the situation with the cameras in that parking lot?
I'm sorry, repeat that, ma'am?
Cameras. Do we have cameras in that parking lot?
We have, so there's some city cameras in that neighborhood that, that we utilize, I mean, this, the city cameras, the cameras all over the city. This, this camera, we have our own cameras that we customarily utilize in these types of investigations.
Okay. I don't have any further questions, but thank you.
Council Sani.
With the facilities down there, because we don't want to say which business or what was involved, all the establishments that...
Counsel, if you could check your microphone off.
Alcohol, serving alcohol, are they all required to have a police detail now, if they have, on Friday, Saturday nights, do you know?
All facilities?
The ones that serve alcohol?
No, no, no. I mean, well, we can talk about the facility, the facility, you know, the incident happened outside of Browser Grill, I mean, that's no, that's no secret. There was no detail officer on duty. If your question is...
Are they moving forward that they have to have detail?
Yeah, so, so I asked for, there was a licensing board hearing last...
Monday.
Last Monday night.
Yeah, it was Monday.
Yeah, last, Monday night. And I asked my folks to, the things we're interested in are making sure there's proper lighting attached to that building, making sure that their camera system is, is in operation, making sure that on nights that are busiest, the high-peak times, that they have a higher detail officer. I requested that their hours be rolled back from 1:00 to a closing, an earlier closing time. Those are the type of things that we want to do to make sure that, you know, they're being responsible and they're running a proper place, so we don't have the wrong crowd and the wrong people coming there. And some of those things are, and they've been cooperative to date.
Yes, I, I did go to the license, and a few other councils were there.
Yep.
And they did, you know, state that they pulled back their license, they have to have a detail on those busy days, which I'm glad to see that. And the people out there need to know, it wasn't Everett, someone in Everett going after someone in Everett.
No, I mean, most of the people...
It's an outside.
Most of the people were not from Everett, it was a mix of people from around metro Boston. There was an element that was not a, I should say, not a, not a, not a good element, that was the, the type of event that was promoted drew people that we wouldn't want coming out to any facility, our business in our community. And, I mean, if we, sometimes if we had got wind of that, we might have been able to stop it, but we were not privy to that, that information beforehand.
Thank you, and I thank you for coming tonight, too.
Oh, no problem.
I know we shot notice.
Yeah, no problem.
Council McKenna.
Good night, chief.
Good evening.
The, I had talked to you a couple of days ago in regards to that information that you just said. So we are looking for something to happen with the license, correct?
Yeah, well, there's, well, there's some, there's some separate issues. There was, there's issues, they were on for hearing that had issues that had nothing to do with that event, and so, you know, that had to be addressed, and then, you know, as a licensee, they've been, I would think they'd be cooperative under the circumstances of what transpired, and they have been. So, yeah, we want to, I mean, we want to hold people accountable that are going to have a license for that kind of business, and to ensure that they're taking proper steps to have a, a safe crowd.
Safe and secure crowd.
Safe and secure crowd, exactly.
Also, I, I know that we have directed patrols that are, we, I believe we had a piece on about that, and also we had approved that to go into effect. That's, is that why the officers were on scene?
Yeah, so they, so they, customarily, there's an officer assigned, during that hour anyways, an officer assigned to the square, there's usually one in each square, sometimes multiple, and the other officers swing in depending on what we consider to be a potential hotspot in...
Do, not to cut you short, but do we have on the hotspots now that we know about, is there directed patrols that are actually...
Yeah, we, we, at any given time, there's a number of what we call short-term hotspots that we, we send what we call a directed patrol to. And then, as part of the primary, an officer's beat, so an officer that's assigned down there, they have to be aware of the licensed establishments when they empty out, and trying to make sure they're done orderly. I mean, it's, it's a source of a complaint. I know, I just want to emphasize that, it's, it's a safe neighborhood, but you have to keep in mind, it is a downtown area, it's got a number of licensed establishments that close at 1:00 in the morning. Can it cause disturbance when people come out? Sure it can. Anytime you have a high volume of people coming out into, you know, between 12 and 1:00 in the morning, especially in the summer months when people's windows are open and so on, I mean, I can't change those dynamics, but again, we're trying to hold people accountable and make sure that they're at least respectful to the neighbors and that they're running, you know, their operations as best they can with the neighborhood.
Chief, just to ask the question, isn't, this is a food establishment, correct? And also...
Look, well, it's a food, yeah, they have a liquor license as well.
Okay. And, I mean, have they ever had any type of situation where they had this type of program that they were trying to run that night?
I, I, I don't, I don't know for sure what they've had for promotions down there, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I mean, some of my people might know a little more detail, I don't know the, the history, though. There's been multiple owners over the last decade that place has been there.
All right. I, I just, I wanted to know if it was like an isolated incident, or this has been incidents that have been leading up to this?
Well, there's been incidents in there, and I think those incidents were brought up at a licensing hearing.
Mm-hmm.
So I think those were talked about, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much, chief.
Counsel Del Sol.
Chief, I want to buy that a couple of days after, we were at the meeting Monday night, there are cameras on the building, I'm not sure if they were there before the incident, if they put them up since then. But what repeated earlier was, they're required to have lights put out there, cameras put out there, in a detail, and also...
Roll back of hours.
Roll back on hours, I think they kept it closed at 11, they could filter it out to 12.
Correct, yep.
The other thing I was thinking was, have they checked, are they overcrowding inside? Like, let's say they allow 300 people at a time.
There is a, there is a limit, I mean, those are all issues that were being discussed, and they have to have crowd management people as well, trained, crowd management people. Those are all issues that were brought up and discussed, so...
Okay, I did talk to a few neighbors...
We're going to make sure going forward that they are in compliance with all those things.
Okay, I did talk to a few neighbors, and you guys were there, if not exactly when it happened, with seconds of the incident, and thank you for that. Thank you.
Counsel Mark Casey.
Hi, chief, follow you. Chief, just to, just to, not to be repetitive, but the lights, the lights and the cameras have to be updated there, police detail, and now, are they going to stay at 11, or if to be updated there, police detail, and now, are they going to stay at 11, or if they comply with that, they go back to one o'clock?
I, I don't know long-term, Councilman, what's going to happen, or how long it's going to be, I mean, I think it's an issue between the licensing and potentially, I don't know if the ABCC is going to get involved.
Because when they're emptying out of that place at one o'clock, or 1:30, when they usually, you know, Sacro Plaza people, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of them have relatives, seniors there that, you know, complain a lot about it, I mean, there's been discussed about maybe reducing the size of the place, I mean, we never really had a nightclub downtown Everett, as long as I can remember, we had a function hall.
Yeah, yep.
But the functions were maybe, you know, once or twice a week, this seems to be an occurring thing all the time.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, I agree with you, I mean, a function hall, you know, the function hall type parties or events, I think are usually less problematic than promoting a nightclub-type atmosphere, as you, you know, you can imagine, if you bring in, depending on what you're promoting down there, but, you know, when you're doing birthday parties and anniversaries and those kind of events, a little different than, yeah.
I mean, do we start taking back the place by trying to limit the size of the place?
I don't know, I mean...
I mean, the definition, is it a function hall, is it a nightclub, is it a restaurant, so, I mean, I mean, it's a big place.
Yeah, well, I mean, obviously, I'm going to give my, my opinions when, when asked, I mean, the licensing board has different powers and conditions that they have to deal with the folks that they give a license to, so, I mean, we're going to cooperate with them and do what we think is in the best interest, and, you know, I, you know, I think you guys know where I stand on it, I mean, I'm not, I'm not anti liquor establishment, but if you're going to have a place, be responsible, be respectful, be safe...
Because that would be the large staff to run a place like that, you know, I mean, you'd probably need like 10 people, inside people, you know, plus your police detail, he'd be overwhelmed in that place, you know, if you're monitoring people.
Sure, yeah, I don't know the details of the staffing and all that offhand.
Yeah, I mean, is there, now, are they going back to one o'clock, or are they going to stay at 11?
I, I can't answer that right now, I, I think it's going to be a little bit before they do that, or can do that, if they're, if they're able to.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Seminelli.
Thank you, Mr. President, to you, Chief Mason, I was just wondering, at that licensing committee, did anybody mention anything about shutting them down for a period of time?
If I may, Chief?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
From the chair, I happen to be one of the individuals that was at that meeting, and this is unfair to ask the chief, but if I just give you a quick summary, there was a concern about maybe having them shut down, the problem was, the licensing board decided that if they did pull the license completely, they would appeal it to the Alcohol Bureau in town, and they would actually get their hours back to one o'clock, so what they did is, they're rolling back their hours to 11 o'clock at night, they are going to require them to have a detail on Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays, the owner of the establishment had mentioned he is going to get away from those types of events that cause this problem, and is looking to make it more like the old Bon塞 song where they were doing weddings and parties and things of that nature, so, what's happening now is, it's in the hands of the licensing board, they're going to give them an opportunity to prove themselves, and if there continue to be problems there, at that point in time, it will be up to that body to pull the license completely, I know that there were members of the Police Department that were there, that shed quite a bit of information about other matters in the facility that we weren't aware of, and I think that it was, it was an excellent forum, the officers brought a lot of attention to the matter, the licensing board, I think, handled it fantastic, it was a very large crowd, it had a potential to go in a lot of different directions, they made it very clear, the board made it very clear, that we will not put up with this as a community, that the owner needs to prove himself now, pulling back those hours to 11 o'clock may not sound like much, but that hits that wallet really hard, and they understand that the next step is closure completely, pulling the license completely, so they said they're going to comply, they said they're going to work with the Police Department in terms of suggestions that were made with regards to lighting, angles of camera, et cetera, so, I think that they've done everything that they can at this point, I know the Police Department is working with them diligently, hopefully, we're going to prevent this from ever happening again, hope that helps, Counselor.
Well, I'd just like to say, I think it's a big cover-up, someone died there, okay, this is not like, just a fight, they've been warned many, many times, them, them people down there, I think it's time to shut them down, is there any way the council...
The licensing board.
The light, can we go out petition from a council here and say we'd like to have them shut down?
You could absolutely send your remarks to the licensing board, they are handling it right now, and I was, I was there that night, they made it very clear that they weren't going to take any nonsense, that this has got to stop immediately, the way that they operate their business, and that if they don't, it's in jeopardy.
But, Mr. President, please, they've been doing this, how many, how many times are you going to give them a...
It's, it's not in our jurisdiction, it's up to the licensing board.
Could we invite the licensing board up here and ask questions?
That'd be your pleasure, but right now, we have a chief here, and I don't want to keep him any longer than he needs to be, it's okay.
Okay, I have no more questions for the chief.
Are there any other questions for the chief?
That's okay.
I'm sorry, Counselor Napolitano.
Thank you, Chief, most of my questions were asked, were answered, so, I, upon me if I get redundant, it's not my intention, you know, granted, I know you mentioned about having an officer in the, in the square, hotspots, but incidents in this parking lot are not new, hasn't, you've been up here before us, when we've requested either in committee or through full session, extra, either, either, extra patrols, or at least something to dismiss the, the groups when they first come out of the club.
Yeah, well, here's, here's the problem, so you have a city parking lot, it's not their parking lot, it's a city, municipal parking lot that wraps around the backside onto Nowitz Street, then you have another municipal parking lot on the other side of Nowitz Street, to, so you have customers coming from multiple locations, you have a number of licenses in the downtown area, at least one, two, three, four, five, five to six of them, they're all coming out at one time, so, you're correct in saying, well, there, there's been complaints primarily of noise, you know, during the hours when the, when the bars close, one o'clock in the municipal lot, most of them come from Sacro Plaza, and most of them are in the warmer months, the summer months, so that's correct, so that's, and that's why we're down there, but some of those, you know, those, those issues, we try to address by being there, by having people come out, get in their cars, and depart the area and go on their way, but that alone, having noise, is not going to shut down, by customers leaving, I don't think it's going to be able to get you to shut up, shut a place down.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not talking about shutting them down, because the thing is that, yes, the, the business has a certain bit of onus here, running an event that it can't manage.
Correct.
But on the other hand, the incident happened in the municipal parking lot, and I mean, even last year, we had this, we had this piece in committee requesting, you know, patrols in there to move the crowds along.
Yep.
Now, I remember back in, back in the day, you know, of course, there was a nightclub in Everett Square under the Bon塞 song in the 70s, but, so there has been, has been there before, it hasn't been in the last few years, but other, but I mean, back in the day, when the clubs, when we used to go to clubs, I know the one thing that I always was impressed on, that when people let out, the cruisers hit the parking lot and said, "You don't have to go home, but you can't stay here," and I'm concerned that, that was the impression that we were left last year was going to be occurring, and we've tended to fallen away from that, now, I'm not trying to place any blame, but I'm saying is that, the issue is that you're going to always have people come into the city that are not from the city, you tend to, in business, you tend to encourage that, because a business can't survive 100% on its, on the population that lives here, you've got to rely on word of mouth and expansion, what safeguards are we putting in when these clubs start to lay out, to make sure that these crowds don't formulate, we're talking about what happens after they form, but I'm talking about what happens to prevent them from forming, getting a cruiser, I don't, I've talked, I remember last year, when this incident came up, I went and talked to the owner down at the, at the Browser Grill, and he was saying, he's one guy, you know, and he gets his staff out there, but he has no jurisdiction outside of his building, in that respect, as a taxpayer, he's relying on the municipal services to back him up, and I'm just concerned here, and the number of calls, I'd have been at the, I'd have been at the meeting last week, except my wife and I were out of town on her anniversary, but unfortunate, but I did have people there on my behalf giving information, and I've also heard from quite a few residents, I'm just concerned that we're not, we're not addressing the situation in the magnitude that we need to, to create a safe environment down there, that will still allow business to flourish, if we're letting this situation progress, and I'm not, I'm not, definitely not saying the police let it happen.
Well, what I can tell you is, this incident would not have happened if the type of event that was promoted there, these people would not have been in our city, some of the people that have been identified that were at that scene, are, have been identified as extremely bad people, dangerous people, and we had officers, this incident almost didn't happen because the officers were there, but sometimes we're dealing with people that really don't care whether the police are there or they're not there, the time of this incident, if you're aware, there were about six or seven shootings around metro Boston, and, you know, it's, we scratch our heads sometimes, too, but we know that the police presence almost prevented this from happening, based on some, some witness reports that we've, for feedback, so, it almost didn't happen, I wish it didn't happen, but it did, going forward, we have to make sure it doesn't happen again, I think we're on the right path, but we also have to be careful, too, when you, we start talking about strategies on, or tactics on how we're going to move people around, I mean, I can't have, you know, platoons of officers going outside of every liquor establishment, I mean, if you see what's going on around the country as well, I mean, you have to be careful with our approach on what's going on, and before you know it, you have people turning on us, and then you have a bunch of constituents saying the police are heavy-handed, and all we're doing is, you know, we went out and had a couple, a few sociables, and we want to, you know, shoot the breeze and go home, so, I mean, it's, it's finding the right balance, and I think what we've been doing has, has been, has been working, again, there was an element brought into the city because of a certain event that was promoted.
But you would agree that this area is designated as a hotspot, I mean, there's been enough complaints up here through the city council alone to give us the impression this is not...
Well, when you say, you say the area, I mean, we, we have a hotspot, this is...
I'm not talking about the municipal parking lot between Sacro Plaza.
That in and of itself is not identified, it's part of a hot...
We had a piece on the calendar last year.
Yeah, what I'm trying to explain to you is, that parking lot and that area of the square, along with another six tenths of a mile of an area, is identified as one larger hotspot between traffic and crime issues, so, our resources are stretched along, looking at a bunch of things, not just that one parking lot, it wouldn't be, we, we wouldn't have the resources to keep officers there around the clock all the time, and the parking lot's only an issue when these licensed establishments filter out at the end of the nighttime.
But wouldn't that be the time for a peak presence?
And what I'm telling you is, there was a presence there, it would, there were officers on scene when this incident happened, I know, I know it's, I know it's hard to believe, well, how did the shooting happen, but we're dealing with some people that really don't care, sometimes, that law enforcement is in the midst.
Okay, and, and I'm not, I don't want to beat that to death, because, again, I, my understanding is that if they're there, they're not there to sit, they're there to move, move the crowd along, and especially with what's going on in the country, I mean, I understand that, I mean, I've, I've got a piece, we'll be talking again in committee about the idea of body cameras, you know, which will aid in the, in the officer's ability to not be put on the spot, or, and also be able to add evidence to, to their, their job, so, I mean, it's just hard to understand that the progression of complaints that have come out of that area, specific to the crowds that come out at one o'clock, or at the time these physicians, these, these places let out, it's hard to understand that with so much continuous issues, that we haven't developed a plan to get these people out, regardless of who they are, and I, I understand, law enforcement's a tough job, you're on, you're out, you're a target, and some people care, and unfortunately, a lot of people don't care, you know, but I just, just can't ask the question, is, can we do a better job of this, could we have taken this one step further to create a precedent that has dispersed these crowds in a consistent enough manner that maybe, just maybe, this incident may not have occurred?
Well, it's, like I said, it's a right balance, I mean, it's, it's a matter of, you know, being professional and courteous, and being a little tough at times, but you got to, you got to know the crowd you're dealing with, you got to know what resources you have with you, are available for you, at any given time, those dynamics change, you know, call system, there could be another, a hot incident going on where resources go, I mean, we don't recommend officers go into large crowds, but one, one officer, we're not going to send into a crowd of 30, 40, 50 people who, who might be riled up, it's, nowadays, I mean, law enforcement's unfortunately learning the, you know, term you'll hear, look at our tactical disengagement, the disengagement more in, in trying to get people to break up on their own, or in manners where, where having a softer role than, than getting in people's faces, I mean, it depends on the crowds and who, and who you're dealing with.
Well, Chief, again, I appreciate you, you coming up here and taking the time to give us your insight, you know, you're...
No problem.
As a top cop in the city, you know, that your, your, your opinion is of heavy value, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chief, well, before I ask Chief the question, I just want this board to know is, when we went to the license board, okay, the rollback of 11 o'clock had nothing to do with this incident, they have to go back in front of the license board for this incident, yeah, but I'd also like the chief to know that everything that the license board said, as far as the lights, the cameras, they have done that, I, I've been driving by there, I've been monitoring it, I have people calling me up, telling me what they're doing, they are complying, and they, like the council president said, they did say they want to change this into more like a Bon塞 song, where they want to do weddings and so on, so, we don't want to be here to throw anybody out of business, and what they did was wrong, they shouldn't have invited those people up, and whatever happened in the parking lot was unfortunate, do you believe that if we, if we ask the mayor to put on more patrolmen, that it would be a good idea just to monitor the parking lots and the parks and nothing else, because you have been very good, even with the parks, I mean, there's issues everywhere in the city, not just the parking lot, so, we, we know that, with the noise, with the drugs, and so on, and so on, so, let's call, you know, a spade a spade, all right, would it be more helpful if we request from the mayor to have just a couple of patrolmen, just patrolmen, for night, and night shift, and day shift, just to do parks and parking lots, and in the meantime, give tickets for, you know, corner parking?
We've basically, we've been doing that, we have the resources to do it, we've been doing it, I mean, and some of the parks that might be in some of your wards have been getting hit hard, again, some of the parks have a little higher priority because they're a little more of a hotspot than other areas, we've had a relatively so quiet summer in the parks, you know, I, like I said, I wish I could prevent them all, all these incidents from happening, but that's not realistic, but I think we have adequate resources to handle, handle the issues.
Like I said, the incident in, that happened at the Browser Grill in the parking lot is unfortunate, but I think that incident would have happened anywhere, that it's just something that would have happened regardless of whether, too bad it happened in Everett, but anyways, so you do have the resource for the patrolmen, we don't need, you don't need any more patrolmen, you don't need to hire any more patrolmen, you have the resource.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much for appearing, I really appreciate it, taking time out of your busy schedule.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the chief, seeing none, thank you, Chief?
Okay, thank you, folks.
And, for the, for the viewing members at home, we're talking about the various pieces, I don't want anyone to think that we're callous, it was a huge tragedy that happened that evening, a woman lost her life, child's left without a mother, prayers are with all of them, and as the council had mentioned, the rollback of hours actually didn't even involve this particular incident, there were other issues that were involved at that bar, this particular incident's still under investigation, and they're still working with the Police Department, on the piece, Counselor, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to refer back to sponsor, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Moving second to refer item number 24 back to sponsor, all in favor?
On the motion.
On the motion, Counselor.
Yes, I think, is there any way, I don't know if you feel this way, the board here, is it maybe inviting the licensing board up here, or put it into committee, let them explain that we all didn't go to the meeting, and that the people out there are public hearing, I need your input of, if they think we should do that.
It's, it's up to the body.
It's, it's under investigation, so, that's something you can put on at a later date, but I think we need to wait for the investigation to end.
Yeah, Counsel, I agree with you, I think it's a little premature, but feel free, Counselor, to express your concerns to the licensing board directly, they'd be more than happy to hear from you, and, believe me, I was there that night, they handled it very ably, they did a very good job with the situation they were dealing with.
So you just want this to go away, there's a big thing down there, someone's...
It's not going away, believe me.
Someone's got shot down, ain't like, just...
Yeah, yeah, no, they're, they're under, they're under review for quite a few issues.
No, I think they should be shut down, and I'd like to see them, and I would, I don't talk to them myself, thank you.
On the piece, all in favor referring back to sponsor, opposed, you have referred item 24 back to sponsor, clerk will return to the regular item of business, I believe it's item number two.
Item number two, an order sponsored by Freight Coopones President to appropriate $2,200,000 for paying costs of park improvements, Treasury with approval, the mayor's authorized bar set amount, and to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore, be it further ordered that the Treasury is authorized to file application to qualify in the chapter 44A any and all bonds of the city authorized by this order, and to provide such information execute such documents as such officials of the Commonwealth may require in connection therewith.
Motion, this go to Ways and Means, motion, are you for the Ways and Means?
That's, that's proper.
On your...
On the motion, Counselor.
I think the bias also would be not to be... Our motion means refer to Ways and Means, if information on which parks, it includes, I see before us, we have a, think of the metal, I don't know if that 2.2 million is for this, or it's the continuation of the Florence Street job.
Who would you like to, to attend that meeting?
What's that, Ways and Means total, I guess, someone from the Park Department would have knowledge of where the money's going.
Okay, and someone from the administration?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion we have in front of us, is there a second on that? Okay, it's been moved in second to refer this piece to the Ways and Means Committee, requesting someone from, a representative from the Parks Department, and representing a individual from the administration, and among some of the things to be inquired are which parks are included, is that correct?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, you have so referred, clerk will read the next item of business, item number three.
Mr. President, if you could, I pardon the interruption, if we could...
If we could take items three, four, five, and six collectively, just to waive the reading and have the clerk just read the donation, who, you know, who it's from, and a letter of thanks be sent.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and second, suspend the rules, and take items three, four, five, and six collectively, and if the clerk could please, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? You have so referred. So, Mr. Clerk, if you could please read those items, and we'll vote on them individually or collectively rather.
Donations, number three is donation to the Summit Jobs Program, Buckingham Street Market, $35. Paul W. Marks, $350. Every car service, $700. Honda cars of Boston, $300. Every cooperative bank, $700. Teamwork cleaning concept, $700. Jay Marchese and Sons, $1,400. Number four is donation to the Everett Adult Learning Center Program from UFCW Local 1445, $150. Number five is donation to the Council on Aging, $20 from Benjamin Si and $50 from Fern Price. Number six donation to the Independence Day Celebration, Willa Bradusaga's, $2,300. Bathalumew Company Incorporated, $500. Beta Group, $500. Century Bank, $500. First Southwest Company, $500. Kelly and Ryan Associates, $500. Koppelman and Page PC, $500. Smith and St. John Incorporated, $500. And Unit Bank, $250.
It's been moved and second to accept the donations favorably and send a letter of thanks to the individual donors. All in favor? Opposed? So moved. Clerk, read the next item of business, item number seven.
Item number seven is a petition for a second class bonus license for Genualdo Auto Service, DBA Woodlawn Auto Service at 3 Woodlawn Ave. This, this is not a new license, the, yeah, due to illness, he's very late in turning it in.
All the papers in order?
Everything is in order, we made him go through everything like it was a new license, so.
What's the pleasure, counsel? It's been moved and second on the order. Clerk, call or roll.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon. Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sachata. Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Nine yeas, zero nays, you've granted the license petition. Clerk, read the next item of business, item number eight.
Item number, item number eight is communication for Marchese Associates Legal Services, relative to Supreme Cosby and renamed Crimson Auto Sales LLC at 163 Ferry Street.
Counselor Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just, I mean, is this something we're supposed to have? I mean, do we all, I mean, I would think if it's a communication, just, I mean, I never received anything or whatever, so I don't know.
Yeah, typically, you're right. Typically, communications, you just, you just take them in. We could, counsel, through the chair, please, through the chair, please. Typically, you take them in and put them on file. Perhaps our clerk has more information, we could find out from, Mr. Clerk, do you?
Yeah, if I may, through you, Mr. President, from what I understand, the name Supreme Cosby belonged to Mr. Marchese, at some point in time, a gentleman who worked with him and was also part of the corporation, went to the Secretary of State, changed the corporate papers, removing Mr. Marchese's name, then sold one of the three dealerships, the one that Mr. Marchese was not involved in, sold it, and then absconded with the money and just went south. And so, Mr. Marchese wants not, obviously wants nothing to do with the name, and has been, and this, the person working for him removed him. I thought he would have needed his permission, quite frankly. So, what he wants to do is start with a new name.
Counselor Mangan.
I'm upset, thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor McKinnon.
We received the communication, it was dated July 2 as well, just as it was changing of a name. So, if that.
Yeah, there is a reason behind it, and I'm sure the licensee would have more information, because I don't even know how accurate I'm being. Perhaps you could send it to Community and Business Development, and have the petitioner himself explain it to you, because I'm really generalizing on what I know.
Yeah, just to get it factual.
Yeah, just so he can explain why, why the name changed.
Counselor Hillen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are the offices still the same?
No, and then, no, no, that guy has been removed, obviously.
But all the others?
Hmm?
Whatever others there are, are they the same?
The offices now, oh, no, the offices have changed now, there is no more, the Supreme Cosby that exists now is that gentleman who absconded with the money from two different dealerships.
Make a motion to send it to a committee.
Yeah, he might like to explain it, I think.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second that, but on the motion.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I was going to recommend to go into committee, but do we have anything in right and legal? I mean, can people just come up to the clerk and say, I want to change the name, without any legality?
I'll defer.
No, no, yes, yes, we do, we have new corporate papers. And he's, he's basically requesting from the, that, he's informing that the name has been changed and why.
So, you have new corporate papers?
Because you have a licensee, it's a license, it's really not the name that's licensed, I believe. I think it's the licensee, the person, the entity.
Okay, so, I'll stay with that motion to send it to committee.
Yeah, I've got that.
Okay. It's been moved and second to refer this to Community Development, I think, Community and Business Development. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Clerk, read the next item of business, item number nine.
Item number nine, Committee on the Hall Report is honored as the mayor and city solicitor appear, this being discussed the power plant attack situation in Everett.
Chair would accept the motion to accept the committee report, I believe it was, keep the matter.
Mr. President, if we could, I apologize, if we could, I know we had discussed certain things, but what I'd like to do, instead of just sending it back to sponsor, I would like to, if we could, bring it back up to second meeting of October, the end of October.
Whatever the pleasure of the counsel is. The, I think the committee notes themselves were to refer to this meeting, the biggest concern was to make sure, because we did go into executive session, was to make sure that we maintained the integrity, that the minutes remain sealed pending possible litigation. So, if it's the pleasure of the body to refer this to our second meeting in October, so be it. But the most important thing is we have to maintain the integrity of those sealed minutes. Correct.
On the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor DeFlorio.
I would agree, I know it's the council's piece, and I definitely don't want to be disrespectful, but I would agree that it would go back to sponsor, and when the administration has more information, then put it back on the agenda again. Because I would hate for it to come out in October, and then we ask the wrong questions. That's my opinion, but I'll leave it up to the council.
Mr. President, thank you, I understand the concerns of Counselor DeFlorio. All I'm saying is at that time, we just revisit it, and at that time, if there's nothing, we can either refer it back or we can delay it even more, like I said, which is something that.
Whatever the body wants to do is fine, so let me just start there.
Thank you.
I believe at the meeting, I think the administration said that they would prefer we do refer back to sponsor, and then when they get a little further along the way, we could always put it back on.
That's fine.
But you're free to make any motion you want, the body's free to vote on anything.
No, that's fine, if the administration feels that's the best way to go, like I said, I don't have any issue with that, but, like I said, either way, it's going to come back and forth at some point.
Okay, so, the motion.
So, I'm thinking, motion, refer back to sponsor.
Okay. On the motion.
I'd also like to make a motion that it remained in committee, where it belongs, where those papers belong, and that committee has the authority over them. Don't let it float around with, with nobody in charge of it. Refer it back to sponsor, no objection, I mean, no, you know, but I mean, I don't want it to be loose. I want it to be under the control of the, of the committee of the hall, that's what we're sent to.
Correct.
And that we should hang on to it until October. So, I make a motion that it remain with the committee of the hall, under the, under the control of our, the guy that, of John.
Clerk of committees.
He's the one that did the record.
Let me, let me defer to our clerk. I'm not so sure we can suspend it like that. Okay, you're the keeper of records, can we suspend it like that?
What will happen is that the clerk will prepare the minutes, put it in a sealed envelope, will come down to me, I'll put a seal on it with the, as you know, with the big seal, and it'll go in the vault and not be opened until such time, but it'll be prepared by, by the clerk of committees, he will have the date on the front of it to tell us when it shall be opened or can be opened, and that will probably say at resolution of the, of the thing, and it will remain in our vault, sealed. Sealed in our vault.
So, if I understand correctly, I'm asking, so, perhaps the thing to do is to refer it back to sponsor, however, have the sealed minutes maintained in the possession of the city clerk.
Yeah, it's in the executive session.
Well, that's what it's going to be anyway.
If that's, that's the motion we have on the floor?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the motion we have on the floor?
Yes.
It's moved and second to refer back to sponsor, accept the committee report, refer back to sponsor, and maintain the committee minutes in a sealed manner to be held in the possession of our city clerk. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So moved.
Be recorded, please.
Clerk will read the next item of business, item number 10, I believe.
Item number 10, resolution sponsored by Counselor Fred Capone, Committee on Legislative Affairs, discuss implementation of a new snow removal ordinance, snow removal in general, and pothole repairs, with a recommendation to refer back to sponsor.
Chair will entertain a motion to refer back to sponsor.
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved and second to refer back to sponsor, all those favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Clerk, read the next item of business, item number 11.
Item number 11, ordinance sponsored by Counselor Cynthia Sani, Committee on Legislative Affairs Report, amend section 13-7 of the revised ordinance of the City of Everett deserving the peace, by referring to the Legislative Affairs Committee, invite mayor's chief of staff, chief of the lodge, of working with committee, on reviewing the general sound meter measurement levels and the enforcement of violations, make appropriate amendment, appropriate amendments, with a recommendation to grant further time.
Grant further time?
Moved and second to accept the report, grant further time. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have so referred. Clerk, read the next item of business, item number 12.
Item number 12, Committee on Legislative Affairs Report, an order petitioning the great and general court, relative to the retirement benefits of police officer Michael Marchese retired, with the recommendation for favorable action to file a home rule petition with the state legislature as requested.
Second. Moved and second to accept the report and vote favorably. Clerk, call or roll.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Counselors, if you could, please shut your microphone off if you're not actively utilizing, thank you.
Is it a relevant?
What counsel?
No, that's not a relevant.
It's up to the counsel.
That's not a relevant.
Yes.
You've disclosed it.
Counselor, Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sachata. Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli. Yes. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order.
Mr. President, I just want to mark, I didn't actually, just, I know by, by omission of the city clerk, I wasn't asked, and I didn't, my voice is not recorded, I just want to record it, it's ten yeas.
Oh, I apologize.
You know, it was skipped by accident.
If the clerk could please mark that in the affirmative.
Counselor Mangan.
All right, that's ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order. Clerk, read the next item of business, item number 13.
Item number 13, Mr. President, is an order sponsored by Counselor Fred Capone's president, the city accept the provisions of mass general law, chapter 39, section 23D, which allows for a board of commissioners member to be absent from not more than one hearing where testimony or evidence is presented so long as said absent member certifies in writing that he or she has examined all the evidence received at the missed session, which evidence shall include an audio or video recording of the missed session or a transcript.
If I may, from the chairs, for clarification, I believe this was before us once, once, right? Mr. Clerk?
Yeah.
This was before us once.
Yes.
Yeah, I believe, so you can vote on this to enroll if you want. Is there a second? It's moved and second to vote favorably. Clerk, call or roll.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
No.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
No.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
No.
Counselor Capone.
No.
Six yeas, four nays, Mr. President.
Six yeas, four nays, I believe that passes.
That'll pass.
The order passes. Clerk, read the next item of business, item number 14.
Item number 14, an order petitioning the great and general court for the creation of a community enhancement fee stabilization fund.
Favorable action on the order?
Has this been, if I may ask, has this been before?
Would you like me to read the communication?
Please, may I?
Please find attached your consideration order petitioning the great and general court relative to the creation of a community enhancement fee stabilization fund. This order will authorize the City of Everett to create and deposit funds slated to be received as part of the Everett-Win Host Community Agreement, into a special fund that would be subject to appropriation by the city council, following a recommendation from my administration. As you know, in the historic Host Community Agreement entered into by the City of Everett and Win Resorts, the city is due to receive thirty million dollars over three years during the construction of Win Everett in the form of a community enhancement fee. In the Host Community Agreement, these funds would be received with the purpose of capital improvement project identified by the city and extended for that purpose. These funds are anticipated to be received in the middle of fiscal year 2016. I heard the swift passage is this order, as always, my administration is available to answer any questions you may have concerning this important matter.
What's the pleasure of the board? If there are questions we have, Attorney Rodriguez in the audience, it's, what's the motion, move in second for favorable action? On the motion, Counsel Hamlin.
If I threw you to the clerk, Michael, did you say that it was going to be used for community enhancement?
Going to be, it says, um, you know, these funds would be received for the purpose of capital improvement projects identified by the city, and expended for that purpose.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I somehow believe that that wasn't the original intent that we heard that was going to be used for this. I heard that a certain amount was going to be used for community, you know, for the redevelopment, for infrastructure, some of it was going to be used for the taxes, to offset the taxes, some was going to be used in a general fund to use it for whatever you want to do it for, but this is all going to one fund.
That's what it appears, it appears, it's a separate fund, I don't know if otherwise it would just go into the general fund, I don't know.
What's the justification, for the committee?
You could either refer to committee, or you could have Mr. Rodriguez, Attorney Rodriguez come before us, whichever you prefer. Would you like to have Attorney Rodriguez?
Yes, please, yes.
Attorney Rodriguez, if you please come forward, and for the record, if you please state your name.
Evening, Attorney Rodriguez.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, through you to, Mr. Rodriguez, I know what you just heard, and it was my understanding that at several of the meetings that I had attended, that the money coming from the casino was going to be split into certain portions. One of those portions was going to be taxes, one of those portions was going to be for community infrastructure, and one was going to be for anything else that might be available. And I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but you're the one that told me that.
Yes, I'm, I'm already talking, I'm already on the spot.
Okay.
Just to be clear, there's different sources of funding that's going to, that are going to come to the city as a result of those community agreements. There's money that comes in upfront, and then there's money that comes in after opening. The piece that's before you, excuse me, would set up a fund for that money that comes in upfront, those are one-timings, that's not, those aren't regular payments that are going to happen.
After opening. I think the money that you're referring to is after opening, there's the twenty million dollar fee that's, the payment in lieu of taxes, the one twenty-one eight payments that have been established under there, there's the five million dollar community impact fee, and then there's additional monies for hotel and rooms taxes, meals taxes, excise taxes, the sector, that's regular funding that'll come in as general government funding. The money that's upfront, that's been identified as community enhancement fee, that's the thirty million dollars.
That's fine, that's fine. Does it say that in there?
It does. That's as part of the, it's part of the Host Community Agreement.
No further questions.
Counsel Napolitano.
Thank you. The community impact fee, is that, would that be supporting, like, public safety?
What we wanted to do, yeah, the structure, when we developed the Host Community Agreement, which feels like a lifetime ago, we didn't want to pick winners and losers, we didn't want to slot that money in, so we just wanted to get big piles of money and give it to the council and say, this is how we think it was going to spend it. So that can be used for anything to offset city operations, be it police, fire, DPW, ISD, whatever comes up, so that we can address those there. The community enhancement fee is something that's statutorily required under the Gaming Act to be included within all Host Community Agreements, so at that point, it just came to what the number was going to be, and the number negotiated was five million dollars per year, increasing two and a half percent per annum.
Now, let's go back to the community, what the piece, the community enhancement fee stabilization fund.
Sure.
How does that upfront money through this fund go to law enforcement or fire?
It doesn't, it's not designed to. What this, the upfront money, this is all happening before the opening of the facility, so there really will be no real impact to those things. If during construction, any details or any additional, those have to be paid for by the developer. This money was designed to enhance the community as part of the agreement, so, to projects that we decide. We didn't, in other agreements that were, that you could see throughout the Commonwealth that were agreed to by other cities and towns, they specifically identified projects to be funded by the developer, and we didn't want that, we wanted to have the flexibility to choose those things as it got closer. So in terms of, just as the name describes, these are funds that are designed to enhance our community, not impact, not offset impacts that are caused by the facility after opening.
Right, but you can't hire and train police officers after the facility opens and expect them to hit the streets capable of doing the job at the same level as veteran officers who may have two or three years' experience under their belt at the minimum before the facility opens.
That's correct.
So how is that helping the community? I'm just confused, because all the explanations I've heard about the upfront money was the various things, and I've heard public safety as being one of those elements, but now we're saying if we create this fund and the money's put in there, that's not going to happen.
Well, the money can always be expended from that fund for those purposes as well, the legislation is pretty broadly written, and was done so on purpose. The purpose for doing it was not, because this is one-time, non-recurring revenue, we didn't want that to artificially detract away from some of the other things, so, to impact city finances in an artificial way, because it's one-time revenue. So if we take it and we put it in this account, it keeps it away from all the other aspects of city financing, so it doesn't affect them in that artificial way. Because if you just dump money, it could artificially decrease the tax rate, it can artificially do a couple of things, so that you end up digging yourself a hole that you have to climb out of later. So the reason, just putting it aside and we could expend money out of it, subject to appropriation, just like any other stabilization fund, the regular stabilization fund or the capital improvement stabilization fund, which is already in existence. If that makes sense, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to confuse you, I'm just trying to talk circles, but that was the purpose of it.
No, I understand that, thank you.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want the board to understand, as a matter of fact, you explained it very well, that this is a one-time deal, and like you said, it's artificial, so we don't want to put it where it goes towards the taxes, and then, two years from now, your taxes might go down five hundred dollars, but then next year, they're going to go up a thousand, so basically...
It is important to recognize it's not thirty million dollars all at once, it's five million dollars immediately upfront, one year after that, one year or before after that, it's another twelve and a half million dollars, and another year after that, it's another twelve and a half million dollars. So it's not thirty million.
But in regards to whatever millions come in, that go into the stabilization fund, okay? Because before things get out of control again, I want to make it clear, you will not, you or the administration will not be able to spend this money without coming in front of the council.
It would be subject to appropriation, that's correct.
Okay. So the council has to prove, if you come in front of us and say, I want to buy a hundred trees and spend a million dollars, we have to prove that.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Maccasie.
Dave, will there be someone administrating this, or is this just going to a general fund, will we hire anybody to manage this money?
This is just another, this is an accounting measure for us, this is not, well, we need to seek approval from the legislature to do it, this is not an additional fund that requires any additional staffing.
Five million here, can this money be used with the mayor set up a three-member, was it the urban revitalization group, will this be used?
Could it be, could it be expended for the redevelopment authority?
For them to take eminent domain properties?
Well, if you're asking if the money could be spent, could be appropriated for the purposes of the redevelopment authority?
Yes.
Yes, through this council.
Okay, so what will more this do, is fund in the redevelopment community with this money, that's what this is?
You could, I'm not saying...
Well, yeah, that's what this is heading, I know that, but it doesn't make any difference.
Well, that's, well, that's an assumption, what we're asking for tonight is just the account, not any appropriations which would be subject to this council.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel Napolitano.
And if we don't pass this, then what happens?
It becomes general government revenue, goes right into the general fund, and as it would be, a non-recurring receipt.
And who manages that?
It would essentially become free cash at the end of the year.
Okay.
That's my understanding, of course, that's subject to, if somebody else knows better than I do, I'm happy to defer to their judgment, but that's my understanding, is that at the end of the year, it will come in, and then it's non-appropriated, it's above and beyond all the other monies that have been appropriated and spent, it would become free cash.
Okay, but then, again, it goes, again, if that money is to be spent outside of this, without this fund, it still comes into us from the administration?
Yeah.
For appropriation?
It's always going to be subject to appropriation, there's nothing we can do to change that.
What's the difference, just that it, this isolates it?
It's an accounting measure, it's an accounting principle that the administration decided to embark on, it's a cleaner way to keep everything in one pile instead of commingling money like free cash.
Okay, I, just for the record, because I just want to comment, it's something that, you know, Counselor DeFlorio had said after I'd spoke last time, my main concern here is, yeah, taxes is one thing, there'll be enough revenue hopefully down the road to affect that case, but public safety is my main concern, and I consider upgrading our public safety, whether it's firehouse, fire truck, police car, whatever, you know, as part of enhancing our community.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just a little taken back that that is not really the intention of this fund.
Well, the intention of the monies that were negotiated upfront, that was, it was designed separately in the Host Community Agreement, the way that we spend it once it comes here is, because we couldn't make an agreement that obligated you to spend money in a certain way, we knew that, so we said, let's grab all the money we can, and let's figure it out later, is pretty much what we were deciding to do, knowing that we were going to have to grow our public safety force, have revitalization efforts, and make community enhancements in a responsible way going forward. And the administration's working very hard to study those sorts of efforts, and say, if we need to grow our public safety force, how do we do that in a responsible way? Those are studies that are being undergone so that we don't shock our police force, we don't shock our fire department, we don't shock anything else, we want to be, make sure that these things, if they were required to grow, that they do so in a responsible way, much like to the point that you were talking about, to have veteran officers training, trainees, and training rookie officers, we're very cognizant of that, and we're listening to help of folks like, at the Collins Center, we're engaging in those conversations with them, people who have experience in this, to see if we can do that in a responsible way.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel Hamlin.
Just you, Mr. Rodriguez, when I was talking about that conversation that we had, you did say, once the casino was built, and the regular money was coming in, so I was mistaken when I thought that this was the regular money, okay?
No, by all means.
I just want to say that you did say it was when the casino was done and built.
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts to it, and I'm here to answer any questions, so.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Pieces before the council, what's the pleasure?
Favorable action on the order.
Move in second for favorable action, clerk call or roll.
Counsel Dela Sola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
No.
Counsel McKinnon.
No.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
No.
Seven yeas, three nays.
Seven yeas, three nays, the order is passed, the clerk will read the next item of business, item number fifteen.
Item number fifteen, resolution sponsored by Counsel Salvatore Sacheta. City of Everett ban Uber, Lyft, Saqcar, and any other type ride for higher vehicles that is not licensed by the City of Everett, as we have licensed all cabs in the city, those cabs are hired to operate with our license enough to abide by our rules and or regulations.
Counsel Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President, seeing that the good counselor is ill tonight, not able to make it, it would be appropriate to put this under the next meeting.
I think it'd be entirely appropriate.
I second the motion.
And...
Can we do fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen also, please?
Yes.
It's a pleasure of the council, if you want to suspend the rules and take items number fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Take them collectively.
Have the clerk read them, take them collectively, refer them to our next meeting.
So moved second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk could read those pieces, and then...
Item sixteen is to communication, Mr. Lester Marvitz, with the request to place a ban on Uber and all related companies, and item number seventeen is to have the gate leading to Air Force Road open so that citizens can drive their car to the parking lot and enter the Seven Acre Park. Any person that wants to go to that park has to enter from Adlinger School Parking Lot, and that is a small pathway going down an incline which is somewhat dangerous. Also, it would allow Everett residents to get Revere Beach Parkway, get to Revere Beach Parkway, when the streets are circled, is that a traffic jam, which also creates a traffic jam on Main Street.
So we prefer to... Move in second to take items fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, lay them over to our next meeting, all those favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have so moved. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number eighteen.
Item number eighteen, resolution sponsored by Counsel Michael J. Mangan, that the city solicitor appear this meeting to discuss legality of taxing while driving in the City of Everett.
Counsel Mangan.
I just got some information that it's state law anyways, Mr. President, so I refer this back to sponsor.
Second.
Move in second to refer item eighteen back to sponsor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number nineteen.
Item number nineteen, an order sponsored by Counsel John Hahn, an order accept a Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-one, Section sixteen-eight, create an election commission in the City of Everett.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just, you know, in doing this, we haven't had an election commission for several years now, and the reason for it is that the city clerk's office was able to take over that sort of task that they were doing, but we have to understand now that we are, we are accepting identifications from all kinds of different state agencies now, whether people can vote or not, and people are registering, they're not citizens, they're being asked wherever they go, do you want to vote? And the person says, yeah, and now they're voters, but they're not really citizens of this country, and they're voting. The other thing is that we're now going to wind up with same-day registrations, that means that someone can come in the day of voting and register to vote, and where is our office going to be? Our offices are going to be out running the elections, and there'll be no way for them to be doing that kind of, I mean, they might be able to do it, they probably will, but the fact is that it's going to be very, very difficult for them. We're also going to have soon-to-come ten days of voting, that you can go into the clerk's office and vote prior to the election, like eleven days before it, and then one day before the election, it stops, so you've got ten days to walk in, and it's not even absentee voting, it's just voting over the counter, you know, and you just walk in and vote, and anybody can do that, and, I can't read my writing. Oh, I'm sorry, the state, of course, is passing rules every day, and we have no idea what they're going to do, and it's not the, it's not the election division that's doing it, it's the state reps that are passing laws, so the election division has to enforce those laws. And when we talk about the city clerk's office, you're talking about him having a force of seventy-two people at least that are operating, that's a very large department for one guy to have, seventy-two people running elections, someone's got to do it, and yet they can't do this other thing that they're asking them to do. They also have to set up the polls, they have to test the machines that are going to be used in the operations, they have to train all the new clerks, not only train them, they have to go find them. It's not just that we have, you know, seventy-two people come in back every single day saying, okay, I'll work, I'll work, you ask for all the people to come in, and all of a sudden you only get fifty-two, where's the other twenty coming? Someone's got to go out and find them, you know, and a lot of people are asking that they want to work, but by the time you get to them, two or three years have gone by, they don't want to do it anymore. So this is the reason that we should have an election commission, they were busy, do busy work throughout the year, but the most important thing is those ten or twelve days before the elections, you need somebody to take the heat off the clerk's office. This has been done in other places, and as a matter of fact, I'm going to visit a city tomorrow with the clerk, just that we can go over this, what their election commission does and how they operate, just so that we can do this. So I'm not asking for this to pass tonight, because I still want to do some studying on it and everything, but maybe we should just refer this to Legislative Affairs, and let Legislative Affairs handle it and report back to the full board.
Okay.
Okay?
Move in second for Legislative Affairs, Counsel McKinnon, did you want to speak on this?
Just a quick question, are these, to the sponsor, would these be paid positions?
Which the...
The commission?
Well, that would be up to the mayor.
Through the chair. Through the chair, sorry, Mr. President.
That, if I may answer that, that would be up to the mayor, because this is, he makes all the appointments on these things, and they probably will be, you know, I mean, these guys are getting like seven hundred dollars a year for doing what they do, or maybe a thousand dollars now, I don't know, but yeah, they would probably be paid positions.
And how many, how many are we looking for?
I think we'd go three to five.
Okay.
It's not, it's not like twenty-man board, it's either three or five.
Okay, and that could all be hashed out in committee as well, so.
I just, I just have two quick questions, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, it's been moved in second to refer to Legislative Affairs, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have so moved. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number twenty.
Item number twenty, is called for the preliminary election, being ordered by the City Council of the City of Everett and by the authority of the same as follows, and in accordance with the provisions of general law of Massachusetts, in the Everett City Charter, the city clerk being is hereby authorized and directed to notify and warn the inhabitants, the City of Everett qualified to vote as the law requires to assemble at the several polling places, formed within the several precincts with their duly registered voters on Tuesday, September fifteenth, for the municipal preliminary election, then in there to give, in their votes for the election of candidates for the following office, City Council Board Two.
Favorable action, second motion.
Move in second for favorable action, clerk call or roll.
Counsel Dela Sola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Nine yeas, zero nays. You have passed the order. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number 21.
Being ordered by City Council of Everett and by the authority of the same as filed, votes will be up from 7:00 in the morning to 8:00 in the evening for the city clerk to cause all voting places to be properly fitted up for the municipal preliminary election Tuesday, September 15th, 2015.
Is there a second? Moving second, fable action. Clerk call a roll.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Mackaysey.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays. You have passed the order. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number 22.
Item number 22, resolution sponsored by Counselors Fred Capone, Peter Palatano, Richard Delasola, that are represented for the mayor's office and represented from any other applicable department appear at our next meeting to discuss the progress and timeframe for renovations at Florence Street Park.
Chair will entertain a motion to refer this to our next meeting, inviting someone from the mayor's office. Absolutely. Very good. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have so referred. Clerk read the next item of business, item number 23.
Item number 23, an order sponsored by Counselor Fred Capone as president to cause an advertisement to be posted for not less than two weeks to solicit resumes of Everett residents interested in seeking the position of assistant city clerk and that the Committee on Legislative Affairs or Elections receives said resumes to interview each candidate to make recommendations to the full city council no later than September 28th, 2015.
For to Legislative Affairs?
Before we move on, let me ask a quick question. Can we, can we act favorably on this? This is the first time it's in front of us. See, I know...
I guess so.
I mean, if you call it routine, but you do have to replace folks.
I think, I think we were ordered by our charter to do so.
To do so.
We're ordered by the charter to, so it is kind of routine, because we really have no choice but to advertise.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Clerk.
By our ordinances, I'm sorry, not by the charter.
In regards to this position, is there something that we're looking for? What are you advertising?
Mr. Clerk?
I have a description in an ad that will be approved by the president. Yeah. Yes.
So is the job description have to come in front of us before you advertise, or no?
No. No, all it says in the ordinance is that we shall advertise.
So we shall advertise?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McKinnon.
This would be through you, Mr. Chairman, to the city clerk. This would be in the form of a job posting, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
For two weeks, according to the ordinances.
So you would have to do this?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a description with it?
Yes, the job, the advertisement will have a full job description approved by the president.
And anyone could apply?
Anyone can apply as long as they're an Everett resident.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Counselor Delasola.
Yes. Will we get, will we get the resumes also? Will we get the information, who's looking for the job also?
It will go first at the Committee on Legislative Affairs, what the committee, the committee most likely, since they have to make a recommendation, they will make it out, obviously, to the rest of the board, make those resumes available. The only thing that I don't think will be public, if I may, Mr. President, would be, the interviews would not be public. Those would be in executive session. However, the resumes would be public.
Just the resumes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McKinnon.
Just a quick question on that as well. So if, basically what we're going to go on is the Legislative Affairs, they're coming out of committee with their recommendation, and then the rest of us have to basically just...
As with any committee report.
Yep.
You can accept it, not accept it, I mean, but...
Okay.
They'll be the ones that they're viewing and making the recommendations.
Yeah. And we'll be, we would all be furnished with their resumes, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Counselor DeFlorio. Okay. Any other questions on the piece? Seeing none, what's the pleasure?
Fable.
Moving second, fable action. Clerk call a roll.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Mackaysey.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays. You have passed the order. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number 25.
Item number 25 is resolution sponsored by Counselor John Leo McKinnon to have members of Everett residents overcoming addiction organization. Addiction organization. Appear before Committee on Government Operations, Public Safety, and Public Service to explain what resources are out there and to be informed about addiction in our city.
Yeah, I'd like to, I would, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to send this into Government Operations, Public Safety, and also invite the three individuals that appeared before us tonight. I believe they're from Everett Overcoming Addiction Substance Abuse Coalition and the Everett Health, our Everett Health Department as well. So if we could have those three invited to this, I'd like to see if they could come with, and furnish the committee with any and all information that they have on everything that they have. Thank you.
Do we have a second? It's been moved in second to refer this item to Government Operations, Public Safety, and Public Service, inviting the individuals referenced by the council. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have so referred. Clerk read the next item of business, item number 26.
Item number 26, order sponsored by Counselor Michael K. Mackaysey that Section 1, Chapter 8 of the Municipal Code of the City of Everett shall be amended by adding Section 70 as follows, fire hydrant, it's Section 1, what's that, Section 1, Chapter 8, fire hydrant markers.
Counselor Mackaysey.
And as you know, the markers on the fire hydrants have gone up around the city. Unfortunately, a lot of them have been broken half by kids walking by them. I just wish they'd leave them alone. But even though we've proceeded in doing this, it's good to have it as an ordinance so that they have to be done. So if there's a complaint by us, they have to be done. And this will be beneficial anytime when they're looking for fire hydrant or when it snows out, if they don't turn them over, you know, the marker should appropriately be dug out. So I appreciate support on this. It's a great piece.
Is there a second?
We can't vote on it.
This is just going in for enrollment.
If I may, I helped the council with this. If we could refer this Legislative Affairs, the one thing I don't have is a description of the marker, and I'm sure the fire department could provide us with that. I didn't know how to describe it. So many centimeters by...
Okay.
So if we could refer it there and ask the fire department to provide us with the description of the marker that they require.
So we have a motion to, or refer to the fire department for a description of the marker?
It's referred, the motion is to refer to, well, actually, we're inquiring for it. The chair will entertain a motion to refer, yeah, we haven't done anything yet. So the motion that's being requested, because it hasn't been made yet, it's been identified by a clerk as the proper thing to do, refer this to Legislative Affairs and then request the fire department provide a description of the marker.
Right.
So moved.
Okay. On that, on that piece...
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment, commend all of, I mean, Counselor Mackaysey. Since he made that an ordinance to put up these signals, they're going up everywhere. And I don't know who you talk to, Michael, but it looks like all the cities surrounding us are putting them up. So good you have them.
So the motion to refer Legislative Affairs and request the fire department to provide a description of the marker, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have so referred. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number 27.
Item number 27, resolution sponsored by Counselor John Leo McKinnon to have the Committee on Government Operations, Public Safety, and Public Service meet with regards to Yama Street National Street, Kulu Street, safety concerns. Invite the mayor, chief police, fire chief, city slister, and residents of streets mentioned to attend.
Counselor McKinnon.
I'd like to put this in Government Operations, Public Safety.
Requesting...
And invite all the individuals that are on...
Okay.
...to attend.
They're moving second to refer this item to Government Operations, Public Safety, and Public Service, requesting that the individuals named in this piece be invited as well.
Also invite the individuals that are named, the individuals that live on each prospective street, because there was a situation that occurred there, and they need to be in attendance.
With the, with the residents on those named streets to be invited, given notice of that meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have so referred. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number 28.
Item number 28 is resolution sponsored by Counselor Richard Delasola Jr., the DPW Director, Jerry Navarro, appear next meeting to speak about the plans of the new sidewalks up...
Counselor Delasola.
Yes, I'm going to spend, send it back to sponsor for next meeting, but just so that my colleagues know, what this piece is about, a lot of sidewalks are being done in Everett, in the streets, but the sidewalks, within a year, are crumbling, sections are crumbling, and I don't want to make sure that we don't go back and fix them as a city, and the taxpayers pay for it. They're crumbling, and I get pictures, I will have them for next meeting. I've seen all over Everett, the sections, slabs are cracking, and they're not even a year old. I talked to a few people, and they say it's a year warranty. I know one thing, if I had concrete down in my yard, and a year later it cracked, I won't think the warranty is up. So I want Jerry to come up, to appear next meeting and explain if they're following behind the contractor, whoever it is, following up and making them repair it at their cost, not ours.
Is there a second?
Second.
They're moved in second to refer this to our next meeting, invite the DPW Director, Jerry Navarro, before us. All in favor?
Aye.